Thursday, May 13th, Special Board of Education meeting for the East China School District. If we could all please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so first off, we have a little bit of work to do on the agenda. I need a motion to, first of all, delete the action item. We will not be voting on the Co-op Boys Soccer Team at this meeting. We will do that at our next board meeting. So if I could get a motion to delete 5A, please?
So moved.
Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, and then the next item, we would like to, I need a motion to switch 4A with 4B. So we would like to move the Co-op Boys Soccer Team to the A position and the Bond to the B position. If I could get a motion for that, please?
Support.
Any comments or questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Items of Interest, Recognition, and Inquiry. Does the Board of Education have anything they'd like to share this evening?
I would, just a couple things. First of all, I know a couple weeks ago was Teacher Appreciation Day, and just, I know that I speak, I think I can, on behalf of the entire board thanking the teachers. I know it was Administrative Assistant Day in April. I want to thank those people, as well as every other employee group and employee in this district for what they have done for the last year and a half. It has not gone unnoticed. So, just a big thank you to everyone.
Anybody else? Mrs. Sebula?
Just happy to be live in person.
Yeah, alright.
Everybody in three dimensions?
Yeah, we're all happy to be back.
Mrs. Sebula?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to recognize Kirk Rizalka, Craig Hedley, and Dawn Demick, who are sitting at the tables up front here for our Bond Update presentation today. I wanted to acknowledge them. They have been at every single one of the Bond meetings that are held each week, and I want to thank them for their time and their input. And for those that aren't here tonight, all of our administrators that have been at all of these meetings and helped throughout the way, I just want to thank them. And I also just want to wish a happy birthday to Dawn Demick this evening.
Happy Birthday!
Thanks for sharing it with us.
Just where he wanted to be.
Okay, thank you. Alright, the next item is recognition of persons wishing to address the board, and I'm thinking we have no green cards. Okay, so then we'll move right along to the Co-op Boys Soccer Team. Mr. Dave Maru.
Good evening Superintendent Sebula, President Frank, and members of the board. I am here tonight on behalf of Marine City High School, as well as Cardinal Mooney. I have with me one of our newest members of our Marine City High School staff, Brian Bain. He came to us this year as our new freshman history teacher. Brian comes to us with a significant amount of soccer coaching experience, as well as playing soccer himself at the collegiate level. So at his interview, one of the first questions was, does Marine City have a soccer team? And my answer was, we currently haven't been able to field a team in two years. And so Brian's been very passionate and working very hard as a freshman teacher with many of our young men in his classrooms over the course of the year to try to recruit as many students as possible. We have several students who are coming next year to us from the middle school, whose older siblings played on our soccer team when we last had one. So we've had significant interest over the past two years, but again, never getting us past the 10 or 12. So conveniently enough, Ken is the AD currently at Cardinal Mooney, and he is a retired MAC AD as well from Port Huron. Ken was with Port Huron Area Schools for many years, and he brought to us the opportunity to consider doing a co-op. And so Brian and I have been really working hard to see if we could offer this opportunity to our community within our building, and unfortunately, due to low numbers, we still aren't to a solid team where we could safely say, you know, we'll have 20 students, 16 kids each week to come out and compete. And so at this current time, what I proposed before you is a Cardinal Mooney Catholic League co-op program that would allow Marine City's high school students to participate in their program, allowing us to play the Catholic League, but also play a significant number of MAC Conference games as well. So it's kind of our only opportunity currently that we have to give our travel soccer students an opportunity to play. So one of the things that was most concerning for our students, and I know Suzanne and I had shared interests, was trying to get Cardinal Mooney to be willing to look at some opportunities to include MC on the uniforms. And so they provided some samples. I had Mr. Scarselli and Avery Scarselli working on some mockups, and Cardinal Mooney's been very supportive. As we know, they are very close to our community, and they use our facilities. And so for our kids, our practices would be at school, at our high school. Our games would be played at East China Stadium. We would provide our coach, they would also have their coach. And basically, what we would be doing is combining our pool of students, both of us, which have, you know, significantly smaller than most, to create a solid team, with hopes that maybe we can build a program and maybe look in the future of restanding our own teams again. But for now, kind of a cooperative agreement to help both be successful.
So this would be a year-by-year-to-year agreement? We revisit it every year?
So with a co-op agreement, because typically leagues align for a two-year cycle.
Two years.
Because who you play home, you know, the following year kind of flips.
Sure, okay.
So it would be reevaluated every two years.
Every two years.
But if for some reason there was something, you know, that occurred, obviously, the state's pretty understanding. They pretty much have put it in the ball. You know, the state doesn't turn these down. It is all in board and superintendent approval. So the state is super supportive, the leagues have both been super supportive, and just left it in the decision of the board and superintendent to make that decision.
And you need about 20 players to field a team?
With, and Brian can probably speak more to this, as far as, you know, his experience, with our, we've had less than 20 eligibility.
Yeah, okay, sure.
Injuries have created some very hard times for our students, which is partly the reason why we lost our team. You know, you pair student's lack of success with low numbers and disappointment, it kind of creates some trying times. So we're currently, you know, hovering the 12, and it's just, it's not enough.
So we're about eight players short.
Correct.
Okay.
How's the financial aspect work out as far as sharing that between the two schools?
So the biggest thing is, is Ken was willing to allow us to keep our pay to participates of our athletes, which will help cover our coaching costs. The Catholic League, in order to keep some of their kids coming from other communities, is more than willing to cover their coach. Facility-wise, we would provide that. Mooney would help with transportation and officials, and Cardinal Mooney's also willing to help with the cost of uniforms. So they're super supportive, I think, because for them, they can't, like, this dream is, like, we still, you know, we're making progress, but for them, their numbers, I mean, this really would bring some real happiness to some of their students. And for me, what I've learned just in being in the league now for four years, having one coach, you know, we could probably save some money only having one coach, but I've learned with the co-ops, and we've done it with St. Clair and Marine City, it's really hard to not have your students to have an adult that's there supporting them. So we talked a lot about the idea of trying one coach, but I think it's in our students' best interest to have a Marine City coach and the Cardinal Mooney, just to make sure that we're advocating for our students, and there's someone there as an adult to ensure that everything goes well. So overall, I think it sounds like a pretty fair, we already provide our facilities for Cardinal Mooney on the shared property at Marine City High School in the back, and then they use our facilities on Saturdays already for football. So things have been really working out well.
Well, and I think anytime we can offer, you know, another opportunity for our students, you know, we just need to do everything we can to make it happen. So thank you guys for putting this together and...
Do you have any questions?
I do. Sure.
Go ahead, Karen.
Can students from Riverview play, or you only can have two schools?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes. In order to, that would be another whole co-op, and then you'd have to combine the local schools.
Okay. I just wonder if that would help you get more kids, if any of them, but if you can only do two schools?
In front of you, Michael.
Oh, I'm sorry. I see where you have until June 1st to file with the MHSAA, and our board meeting's the 24th, so that week will be enough time. And then, how soon would you know after, I mean, does it take a while for the MHSAA, or is it pretty much, you said that they just automatically are, I don't want to, I shouldn't, I don't want to say that.
They're very supportive. So Tom Rasch, I know him well, he's pretty close with all of our conversations as a league, and as, same thing with the Catholic League. Tom has already given us a go.
Okay, so it's just for us to...
Because Ken wanted to make sure, it's a little unique, having a parochial with the public. So Tom and Ken initially started with this conversation, as well as the executive director of the Catholic League.
Okay.
And our executive director of the MAC. So we kind of did that homework just to make sure.
Perfect.
It was possible before we came asking.
Well, I agree with Jeannie that anytime we can give anything to our kids, that's number one.
I'd like to see a little sun on there.
That's why we're here.
Did you see the sample?
No, not yet.
Yeah, it's in your packet.
Yeah, no, that was my first thing, was can we put a little...
Tony got Avery right on the design, and they were all super excited.
Excellent, excellent. Oh, I see it.
In each of your packets, there's a mockup of a possible uniform.
Yeah, we gotta represent a little bit, right?
And we did the united to symbolize that as well.
Excellent.
So we had to have the Mooney on it, obviously, because that's the team sponsoring the organization.
No, I think that's great. What a great experience for both of these kids.
And we already traveled, if you look at the schedule, we already traveled to Lord McComb, and so many of these locations, we're already out in those areas, so it's not any further for our parents to be driving.
Awesome. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you so much for your time.
Anybody have other questions?
If you have any other questions, we'll be able to know.
Everybody good?
So the schedule you have here is just the Catholic League, but you said you'll have MAC games and...
Yeah, so we have the total 18 games. The advantage that we have now is if we are playing on the Catholic League schedule, we can fill the MAC games or BWAC games of our choice. We don't have to follow the entire schedule. So we will have the freedom to add St. Clair and Marysville and all of our local rivals and games that we want to in addition.
And you said you've already had those conversations with the MAC, so they're good with that?
Yeah, and unfortunately, in the Browns where we play, everyone's short games. So I didn't want to take them all away, so at least if we're playing one game of our league games from the MAC, it'll help all of them still have their competitions as well.
Everybody all set?
Yeah, I think it's great.
Great, thank you again.
Thank you all so much.
Thanks so much, appreciate it. Okay, so we'll move along to our next item on the agenda, and that's our Bond 2020 Project Update.
This evening, we have Melanie Hall, the project manager for TMP with us in person. We have Danielle O'Grady, and joining us virtually is Jerry McClellan. Jerry, can you hear me? Yep, you can, he's waving. Good.
Yes, again.
Yes, please. Yep.
Also, we've got Dave Larson from TMP Architecture. He's our Director of Design, and I have to just say really quick that I think you celebrate your 40th year at TMP, so he's bringing lots of experience and knowledge to the team. We also have...
Your years well deserved.
We also have Kyle Vreeland, he's on Zoom. He is design and architecture as well at TMP. So I think, first of all, I want to say thank you to Suzanne and your incredible team. I think we're all having a great time, working through design documentation, all that fun stuff with you. Also, thank you to the board for our time to be here. Thank you, Jeannie and Pat, it's good to see you again. We're going to go ahead and get started on the 2020 Bond Worth. We're going to talk about three major projects. We're going to talk about, when we say Innovation Center, that includes Innovation Center, Early Childhood Center, as well as the stadium that's adjacent to us. We're also going to talk about St. Clair 6 through 12 Building, so that's the high school and middle school collaborating together. And then we're also going to talk about Marine City, 6 through 12 Building, and the fun stuff that's happening out there. We're going to start with Innovation Center. We have made our way through design, documentation. AUC has given us cost estimating exercises throughout the process. Oh, sorry, is that better? Okay. My bad. I tend to walk around too much, I'll hold on to the thing. So we are at the phase of construction and procurement with Innovation Center, and Jerry, you're on the call, if you can kind of just give us a little bit more insight on that and what we may see over the next couple of months, as far as site work goes.
Sure, thank you, Melanie, thank you, everyone. We are in the process, as Melanie said, of procurement is a pretty good description, of getting all the proper materials selected, verified, ordered, and placed. As you see on this screen, we have done the clearing of the road going over to King Road. That entails some permitting and some other paperwork that we're making sure is in order. But starting here real soon, you're going to see the heavy dirtwork equipment hitting the site, and we're going to be rolling here, you know, starting next week, and then really, really picking up steam into the following week. We're starting to pick up some of the asphalt and start that work. So we, as we reported before, this project is bid out, so there are a couple minor things yet to bid out, but as we track right now, we are tracking two budgets, and things are rolling.
Great, thank you, Jerry. Also, something to help you understand all the goings-on at the site, we have a phasing plan. You'll see here, let's see if I can get this to work. Alright, that purple area there is Innovation Center Edition, that's up against the administration building where we're sitting here today. The green area up there, you'll see, is the addition for the Early Childhood Center. And then Jerry, if you could go back and just kind of help us walk through the phasing and what this diagram means.
Yeah, so this is basically the same plan that Superintendent Sebula presented at the last board meeting with the recommendations, but we wanted to give some clarification to a couple of things. There have been some adjustments, I'll say, in material procurement that we are going to be shifting a little bit on the additions. We were going to start building building pads a little sooner, but now, since the steel is taking a little longer, we're looking to disrupt you in the least amount of time as possible. But the overall dates are going to stay the same. We are staying with the theory of getting the King Road access in place so that the facility can always operate. That's been our goal and will be our goal all the way through this. As you see, we don't start working up in the front until we have access available for the King Road. That's on purpose, that was bid that way, and that is to keep you up and operational. There will be some dust, there will be some things you're doing, but our intent is to keep you operating while we're doing this project. Does that cover, is everyone clear on kind of our approach there?
We got some heads nodding, so I think we're good, thank you. Alright, so here's a floor plan of the Innovation Center and Early Childhood Center. In the front here, we've got, oops. So we've got the four new STEM labs, and then in the green, we've got classrooms flanking it. Over here on the side, we've got a new multipurpose room. Hopefully, we'll have our board meetings there, that will also be used by staff in the community. That main entrance here, and we'll show you a renovation or a rendering of this soon, is right through here. And then this back area is the existing building where we're standing in here, this will be renovated, and then the green is the new classrooms for the Early Childhood Center. If you want to expand on that, Danielle, that would be great.
I'd just like to quickly point out a couple of very important things, which I think are some very proper and visual entrances to the building. So we will have, as Melanie said, some renderings that we're going to show you in a minute, but there will be two very clear main entrance to the Innovation Center, leveraging a secure vestibule sequence of getting into the building, and then also a brand-new proper entrance at the Early Childhood Center, again, using that same safe and secure entrance sequence to the building.
So here, this is looking at that safe and secure entry, the main entry into the Innovation Center is right there, and then we're bringing through these concepts of the porthole, and you'll start seeing a lot of this same vocabulary at the different schools. So this is where we're beginning, this is kind of our first project, where we can get that vocabulary started. And the porthole will be represented here, as well as kind of a metaphor for education and being circular and continuous.
The Innovation Center is described as an addition, but it is a very substantial new construction armature of the site here at Central Office. Materiality, as we were developing that, materials for the building, we were very intentionally looking at connecting to the Performing Arts Center from a visual standpoint, so we know how celebrated of a facility that is in our community, and we wanted to make sure that this new and impressive piece at Central Office had a nice visual connection. So I believe our community will see that come through during the construction of the project. Again, I hope that that connection kind of comes out. There are some similarities with different heights of elements and lines of features connecting architecturally, really making, I think, a very impressive campus facility here. You'll see that, I think the nighttime rendering we showed prior to really showed a nice lit connection by way of an element we call these bollards here. So at nighttime, there will be a lighted kind of lit connection between the two facilities, which I think will be very appreciative and impactful as well. I'd also like to point out, on the east side of the facility here, getting into those classrooms and those labs, lots of natural light and views to the outdoors will be incorporated into the facility, which we know are important things for student experience.
Alright, and it looks like the next set of renderings, we're going to go inside, and earlier in the floor plan, we showed the blue spaces as the STEM labs, so we can go ahead and expand on this, and then we'll show you the multipurpose room.
The four labs, as Melanie mentioned, I think will be wonderful spaces for the students to build projects, explore ideas, but also suitable for maybe more traditional instruction as well, so some flexibility for programming there. Materials for the spaces are concrete floors, concrete block walls that we're letting be kind of industrial-looking, lots of room to move around, flexible furniture. We've been working closely with Craig on integrating instructional technology and thinking that through, so some really exciting features that I know our community will be proud to be able to offer to our students.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Absolutely.
The yellow at the top, was that pull-down electrical outlets?
Yes, so I, yes, in the ceiling, the ceilings will be very exciting as part of these spaces. We do have some electrical cord reels, thank you for pointing those out, that will distribute power throughout the spaces. You see, the ceiling is intended to be an exposed ceiling construction, and we are looking at painting out some of the system elements of the building in specific colors, so that we can, as students and educators in these spaces, be able to almost see how the building is operating from a system standpoint. So you're seeing some supply and return ducts in the ceiling demonstrating that concept.
And you're color coding those with, you're color coding those to go with the industry standards?
Industry standards, yes, thank you. And we are working with Kirk in order to kind of do that in a way that will suit his needs too.
I think that's great.
Getting inside the multipurpose room, as we're calling it, so we see the space being used as a large group instruction space, being used for professional development, professional learning opportunities. The seating capacity in this room, we see being somewhere around 80 people. Flexible furniture, again, I think is a common theme that we're looking to incorporate into all of these spaces, to be able to make them suit whatever purposes we might need in those spaces. You're seeing the structural steel, some of the main steel in that space be color-coded again, so we can literally trace how this building functions and demonstrate that to students.
Any questions on Innovation Center? Alright, we're going to talk about the stadium. I've got a site plan up here to help gain context, and the orange areas here is where we are renovating. We've got that entrance right here, flanked by the toilet rooms and the concession, and then we've got team rooms over here. So I noted the entry earlier, so this is going to be the new entry as you walk in, and this will embrace you, and it's got the same rhythm of the peers, use the same material that we're going to have at the Innovation Center, to kind of get all of those combined together and bring those holistically together. And then we'll have the East China Stadium signage that will be a painted aluminum, and then the letters will be silver. So that right there, the elevation was looking here, looking that way, so as you walk in, and then this is your concessions room that's renovated, and then your toilets.
Yep, so our scope of work, as Melanie mentioned, includes that great new sign entering in the tunnel, as we all know it. We are replacing the existing gate here with a new aluminum gate. The concession stand will get new epoxy flooring finishes painted, new countertops in there, so I think very much appreciated by the folks who are working in those spaces. The toilet rooms will receive the same treatment, new flooring, new toilet partitions entering into the toilet stalls, painting, new countertops, so they will definitely feel a sense of new life and refreshment in those spaces. Also, the exterior of the building is being painted, and a new asphalt shingled roof is going to be put onto the building. The same approach will be taken at the team room building, where we're not really modifying the layout of any of the spaces, but we are providing refreshed finishes throughout these, and the exterior of the building will be treated in the same fashion as the team room, or I'm sorry, the concessions and restroom buildings.
Alright, so St. Clair 6 through 12 Building, we're combining the high school and middle school programs together for collaboration. This includes an addition, a competition gym addition, as well as a new media center entry at the front of the building and classrooms. And so we work together a lot with AUC to determine the best way to get this built, and the quickest way, because we really want to get shovels in the ground. So we have two, what we call bid packs, and that's the BP1 and BP2. So bid pack number one is the competition gym addition, and then bid pack number two will be the renovation to the project, the building, the media center, and the classrooms. Jerry, if you want to just kind of talk through that reasoning, that would be great.
Yeah, pretty much what Melanie stated is we have a distinct project with the competition gym and a... and it allows for us to accelerate that, get that independently designed and constructed while the other design solutions are being confirmed, and we make sure that we get that right. The competition gym is a little more straightforward condition that can happen, and oftentimes, we need to permit that separately to be able to occupy it. And it also allows for some flexibility for the facility while we're doing the renovations, should we need some space. So there's a lot of benefits to pulling that work ahead. Both projects are sizable enough that we don't lose what we consider economies of scale. And by bidding this, essentially, we'll be bidding it in the fall. It puts it into a less competitive arena, as far as projects bidding, allowing for work to handle, you know, be handled during the off-season for a lot of construction trades that we're able to pull ahead. So there's a lot of good reasons for getting that moving first.
Jerry, I know I asked you this the last time we met, because I just keep hearing it over and over and over. Shortage of workers, steals going up. And I know you said that we're right on track, right? And on budget, or a little bit under, so...
We are, and we are continuing to monitor that. It is an issue. That is another reason to look at bid packages like this, to not load this in with the other work. We have worked with TMP to make sure that we're specifying and scheduling appropriate times for the short supply that is there, it's real. And the pressures are there, so we're working through, making sure we validate the systems that are being specified, are available in the time that we put into construction, and then the workforce as well. Trying to get these projects where we can safely build them, not all in the summer, helps us get available workforce. What we're seeing right now in kind of our market is that it is a shortage of workers, but other segments of the construction industry are not as red-hot as K-12 is right now. And that means there's a shortage in the summer. So we are focusing on getting our schedules so that we can split work off like this gym addition and do it through the year and not have everything hit at the same time. So yes, it is real, everything that you hear. And we would love nothing more than take this STEM Center and get a lot of skilled trades working through that, so we can get them working for us. It is real.
Thanks, Jerry. So for the sake of today's meeting, we will concentrate on the competition gym addition. And with that scope, we are in a phase called design development. And so prior to that, it's schematic design, where it's bigger picture. You're trying to figure out what rooms go in your space, and you kind of lay it out. But then, once you get to design development, it's really detailed. So we know that there's 100-plus lockers in the competition gym area in design development. You actually determine what are those lockers? They're metal, they're painted, you know, they have the vented louvers or the mesh. So that's the phase that we're in right now. And we're going to be wrapping that up. And then we give that to AUC and Jerry and his team to do a cost estimating exercise, to make sure that design is always in line with the budget.
Is there going to be a track above in the gym?
Everyone's shaking their heads, no.
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 The reason I ask is I had a retired couple say, "Oh, we're so looking forward to that." And I said, "Oh, I don't know that that's in there." They said, "Well, it was on the picture when we voted on the bond," so...
That may have been from the bond previous, the Central High School.
Yeah, probably the Central High School.
But not on the last one.
Not on this one.
Okay.
You caught me off-guard, sorry.
Oh, no.
When you said "track," I had the STEM lab on my mind, and I thought...
Jerry, do you have that track built into the... I'm kidding.
Good question, Karen, good question.
And where... Is the gym going in front of the school?
Yeah, so we have a... We should have a site plan in there. There we go, nice segue. So this is...
So it's not going in the front?
Yeah, it's going on the side. So this red part here is the gym addition. Does that look familiar to you?
I thought originally it was going to be up in the front.
That's the media, a proposed site for the media center?
Yes. The development on the project that we've had thus far in working with administrators from the building, from executives with the district, the plan moving forward is to situate the new competition gym on the Cox Road side of the building, or the east side of the building. And that keeps the athletic facilities at the same location, kind of the noisy activities, those active activities. It's also, you'll see in the 3D renderings, I think one of the most impactful parts of this particular project is the beautiful new athletic entrance to this side of the building that's going to happen. And the plan moving forward is that the media center addition will sit out front with the combination of the new secure entry addition that has to happen to get that same safety language and entry sequence into the building. And then the classroom addition will potentially sit out in this area.
And then this will help start to explain the floor plan. Danielle, if you want to take that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Dave. The floor plan for the new competition gym, as you see it here, just to get you oriented, the main entrance to the facility will sit here, by way of, again, a nice vestibule, protected vestibule, that is going to sit out front and flush with the gym, the volume of the competition gym itself. We have a nice corridor space that we believe will function really well as like a pre-function, halftime, kind of area to congregate, if you will, before, after, and during events. There are two nicely-sized entrances into the gymnasium proper. And we've been working very closely with Ron Miller and Sandy Rutledge to make sure we've got the optimum court size and spacing from the bleachers to the sidelines, and all of the different types of court configurations that are going to be required in this facility. Retractable bleachers on each side, a curtain to be able to divide the facility for practice, to run on side courts. Complete locker room facilities, including toilet rooms for students and players, some really nice PE and/or coaches' locker rooms. We've had a lot of great discussions on accommodating referees coming in to the building and making sure they have a comfortable spot to kind of land and get prepared for their work. Some very nicely-sized storage rooms. Again, we've been working with Craig to determine technology requirements for this facility. Where would we be housing and securing, and how are we operating? All of those things that are, you know, you think of a gymnasium maybe not being that technologically advanced or complicated, but it really is cool, the things that we've been working with Craig over. A new concession stand, so a proper, secured concessions room with a serving counter. The concessions room will have its own dedicated and secure storage room. A couple of support spaces and some brand-new, large toilet rooms to be able to support the load of visitors coming in to support our students for events.
Hi, now we're going to walk you through the exterior renderings and the design concepts on that.
Thanks, Melanie. I just want to step back and say how excited we are as architects to be part of this wonderful program. It's transformational, in our opinion. Not only just providing greater functionality in program offerings, but this is an opportunity to re-theme the district. And as you look at these renderings, you'll see a consistency, not sameness, you know, but variations on a theme that bring the district together visually and create a brand for East China Schools. Just as in the Innovation Center, this portal circular motif is being brought into the addition for this gymnasium. And it signifies to everybody that this is the way to go. This is the entry to the facility. And many times, when you walk up to a facility, you're in doubt whether you're entering the right door, you know. And this addition will make it no doubt. This is the other side of the addition, with the existing to the right. We have rooftop mechanical units, but they are carefully concealed, so you're not going to see those. And, you know, a lot of times, that's something that gets dropped on the editing floor because of budgets and things of that nature. And Jerry, we're going to hold on to those, right? Inside...
We are hoping to, as we go through the process.
We will. And Karen, I want just to address the track issue. We do a lot of recreation and sports facilities. And, you know, one-court space like this, people do not like the length of the running space. They do 20 turns, you know. And so we like to see a larger venue when we do that. So especially with runners, people that want...
Well, these aren't runners.
So you can see that it's going to be a very pleasant space with a little natural light, and we're working on some graphic options as well. Want to talk about this display case?
I mentioned earlier, when we were looking at the overall floor plan, the pre-function space, or kind of that corridor space. And we've been working, again, closely with members of the district to develop this, what we initially called multimedia display. But we really think a key branding, an iconic kind of piece to celebrate the accolades of our athletics. Over time, we've got some digital display incorporated there. We'll be able to have announcements or any kind of content displayed. I think also the ability to broadcast the game that's happening live out into the corridor. So if you need to step out for a minute, you can still see the action on the court, which I think is a great feature. And, you know, we think, again, as you can see in the image, some great branding opportunities. We're carrying forward this kind of exposed ceiling construction with some Saints-red ceiling baffles, which, again, is kind of a language we're carrying over from the Innovation Center when Dave talks to the branding message. I think there's some similar elements, exterior and interior.
Was that area of storage also you talked about earlier?
Yes, so behind the display case, there is a significant storage room that is embedded behind that. So the...
The gray portion.
The gray area. And then the display case sits out in front of that, in the beige area, if you will.
And then you would just walk down the hall to the second gym? The gym that's already there?
Correct, that's the pool. Melanie's pointing out the pool. So this is going to butt up against the existing pool. And then, to get Karen to your point, this corridor will go straight through, and we're doing some modifications at the neck here of this new corridor system in the existing building to get you right out into that existing commons area, I think it's called the commons, in front of the existing gym. So again, a nice consolidated approach to planning of the athletic facilities.
Then you'll be able to have two games going on simultaneously.
Correct.
So similar to St...
Melanie, before we do step to Marine City, I do want to touch a little bit on what Dave pointed out. We are, as Melanie stated, going to be going into our estimating exercise for design development. There are milestones that we get to that we validate, are we on the same... Are we on the right track? These items will be validated, and everything Pat brought up, is in terms of what we know, we're going to do our best, forecast those costs. We will then work with the team if we do see some things that need conversation. As it sits now, we feel good. But, and as we go into Marine City, we are in the schematic design phase. Each design milestone, we take a step back, we go through and validate what we have to first make sure it meets your needs, and also we can fit in the cost.
Thank you, Jerry. So similar to St. Clair, six through 12 building, we'll have one at Marine City. And this one will be one big pack altogether. We'll have the project all together. It's a renovation plus a new athletic entry. Right now, for Marine City, we just wrapped up our schematic design package. And right now, that's with AUC, and they're doing their cost estimating on that package to make sure that we're, again, in alignment with that budget.
Well, this is a site, a site plan showing the two red elements are small in plan, but significant in terms of meaning for the building. And the goal here is to ultimately connect that, the two front doors. Is this the middle thing, pointer? Okay, I'm sorry, to get a little lesson here. So that's the front door. And what we want to do, ultimately, through internal renovation in combination with external renovations, is to create a unified experience through this whole school that connects new collaborative areas within the building that we'll be reviewing with you later. But first off, is, once again, using this kind of refreshed vocabulary to redefine the front door to Marine City. To the left is where the administrative area is and will be. And that whole facade really is dated, doesn't present, you know, a real upbeat image. So we knew we were going to renovate, you know, this facade. And in doing that, we thought, well, we could just extend that and do something to hide some of the mechanical entry points into the building and carry it on further to re-clad, you know, put new windows and refresh that whole facade. And create, once again, an identifiable entry for the building that is unmistakable. We know that so many activities occur in the evening, and so we think it's important with all of these that is welcoming, a welcoming image at night, so that you feel like you want to be in there. Yes?
I think we need to maybe just point out that this is a new entry off of Ward Street, so it's being relocated from the King Road entry, correct?
Yes.
Correct, yes, that's a major, sorry, a major move that's occurring. As we know, right now, the main entrances occur off of King Road. And as Dave mentioned, it's a little bit hard to understand if you're a visitor, you know, where do I go? So the new administrative area will be moved from inboard of the facility over to Ward Street. So again, we can develop that secure entry sequence at this facility as well.
Thank you.
Where will the buses drop off, then?
The bus loop will remain at the existing loop off of King Road. And we've had a lot of discussions, again, with administrators from the building, that the proposed auto-loop drop-off, or parent-drop-off, would occur on the east side of the building, leveraging the new kind of athletic entrance and getting those students as close to that new main office as possible when they're getting dropped off. And the existing small auto-loop visitor parking off of Ward Street will be slightly expanded under this work. But if you're a visitor coming to the building during school hours, you would be coming to Ward Street entrance and parking there.
Which is where on the...
The very top.
Right there.
Thanks for helping us clarify that.
Thank you.
So there's the night scene. We also are providing an athletic entry that will be identifiable to the public, you know, so strangers approaching the building will understand where, you know... so strangers approaching the building will understand where, you know, where and what this element is and what that entry is. And once again, at night, you know, being able to draw people in and provide a welcoming experience for people coming to various events. So are we transitioning now to...
So we're going to go inside the building, and Kyle's going to share his screen.
Before we do that for just a moment, if you could just take a moment to explain where this is, because right now currently, when you enter for athletic events at Marine City High School, you come in a different location. So this is also changed from the current location.
Yeah. So that entrance we were just looking at is right here. And then floor plan, that's...
Yeah, I'll just say the pool. Yep.
That's right.
The pool's there in red, and then it's to the north.
Above the pool here.
Yep.
The pool's down here, so that little canopy thing is right here.
Yep.
And the corner that we're enhancing with graphics and metal panels is right there.
I know that this is much further down the road, but are we going to identify, like, door 38 for athletics or... I know I've been to a couple new schools in Indiana a couple weeks ago, and they had, like, a sign, like, athletic events, door 38, and all the outside doors were, like, numbered. I mean, I know that's way down the road, but my mind's like a sieve sometimes, so I just thought I'd throw that out there.
Well, that's something we should think about as we transition from our schematic design to design development.
I think it would just make it easier for visitors as well, and even for people that live in this area, because, I mean, it's going to be another change.
Well, for the ambulance, too.
And for the ambulance, and, you know...
Yeah. Yeah, I know, emergency services do that a lot. Any other questions before we go inside?
Okay. Melanie? How do we transition? So one real quick thing before we go inside. You said something about ambulance, so I want you to realize that we did it on the Innovation Center. We're actually talking to the first responders, and we're making sure that they're totally aware of the projects and the floor plans and stuff. So we're trying to keep that coordination together, too.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
All right, Kyle, if you want to try and share your screen, and we'll get the team inside the building.
I think we have to switch orientations.
We see it. Yep.
So, about two seconds. See, the halls are getting out in there, so tonight...
I want you to share. This is some pretty close up.
Yeah. We're all set, Kyle.
Can you have my screen? You don't have to drop down.
Yes. Kyle? Yes, we see your screen.
Okay. Like Dave and Melanie had mentioned, you know, we're in the schematic design phase for Marine City, so the main goal is to look at room association and volumetric ideas for the three major spaces that we're looking at, the student commons, the new knowledge center, which takes the place of the existing library, and then the maker's space. So where you're looking at right now would be as if you're coming in the new north main entry of Marine City, and we're taking ideas from the Innovation Center of, you know, exposing the ceiling, end lighting, and baffles. Because this is an existing building, you know, we of course have, you know, some limitations. But what you can see is we're looking at opening up the ceiling in this main entry, extending the existing skylight here, coming about three and a half feet by three and a half feet, and really making it a lot bigger and trying to open up and bring some natural light into the space. So the first area that you'll come to off of this main entry, the new student commons area, with the idea that this could be an area of breakout space, study areas, different furniture groupings, some new booth seating booths, some smaller enclosed study areas, and then access to, you know, the marketing classroom and the student store for the Mariners' Market, as we're calling it. And then around the corner, you know, one of the other major spaces that we're looking at is the knowledge center, which takes place of the current library. It, you know, takes the footprint and expands it to the east and to the south. And one of the main goals, again, was to really make the space feel much better than it currently is. So expose the ceiling, provide some end and lighting, and then really just provide different areas of furniture grouping, really, you know, open up space and provide the different options. But here you're seeing, you know, those different furniture groupings, some different study areas, the more enclosed rooms along the backside, and then, you know, some options for some presentation and breakout areas. Any questions on those two spaces?
The first space, the lobby area where we first walked in, what's there now? I'm trying to picture that in my head.
Currently, right now, when you come in, you know, as you come in this north entry, the right and around the corner, there are existing restrooms here, and then you come into what now is the existing school store right at this corner here where you see this column. And then to the left currently are a bunch of classrooms, miscellaneous classrooms. So this corridor here, you know, this is the wall of the existing gymnasium. And so you have this existing wall here, which, again, the existing school store, and then a little of a breakout area here. Any other questions for these two spaces?
Can you talk about the collaborative nature?
So the social commons area, if you will, will, I believe, offer students, again, lots of opportunities that they don't necessarily have access to now as far as collaboration. Again, even digital displays and things we're looking to incorporate into those booth seating elements, working with Craig again through that. You know, some level of flexibility, but kind of in this open area, we're looking at some built-in study counters and things that will provide lots of opportunities for power to be incorporated into them. So we know going to one-to-one devices is one of the goals of the BON program, and we've got to find ways to get power in places that students will be able to access them and charge up. And we feel, you know, the social and collaborative component of learning is so important to our students, and we really believe that this kind of space is a place that will really celebrate and offer those opportunities to our kids. Kyle, could you hold for just a moment?
Sure.
Not to go away here, is, you know, these little study niches, you know, that are being envisioned, and then further down, associated with this space is the school store, which is going to be a very visible and important corner in that pathway. So the openness and transparency that will be evident or will be there when we're all done in providing for various levels of engagement, from larger groups to just two on two and to provide those accidental learning opportunities is a real goal for this space.
Thank you, Kyle.
Can I move on to the maker's space?
Please. We are now going to...
One of the other areas that we're looking at is a new maker's space, similar to what is being added at the Innovation Center. And right now, this is in a similar footprint to where the existing middle school library is. So right, you know, the view that you're looking at now is, you know, an existing corridor with middle school, you know, to the left and down, and then, you know, there's this great clear story light of a wood-exposed structure. And so we're looking at really opening up and providing that transparency, you know, what Ed had mentioned, you know, was one of our goals in the student commons and knowledge center, was bringing some of that transparency and openness to the maker's space. Again, you know, taking cues from what we are doing on the Innovation Center and bringing those ideas over to a new maker's space for Marine City.
I think one of the most impactful elements of this space is that we are looking to infill that existing depression in the media center. So if you go to the middle school media center right now, a huge part of that space is really sunken in, and that will be filled in, again, to create a single floor plane to allow a more flexible and functional environment for instruction.
Is that a glass wall? Right there?
Yes, it is.
It's to the hall.
Correct.
Okay.
Right. So to orient you again as well, this space they see over here is the existing cafeteria. Were there any other questions for the work we're showing for the new maker's space?
No, we're shaking our heads no. Thank you very, very much, Kyle. Appreciate it. That wraps up our update for now. I want to say again, thank you very much for the time.
One item, if I could backtrack you for just a second, that I'm going to ask Danielle to speak to, and that is in the Marine City complex, the Mariner Boardwalk that we maybe termed it to be, and the connection between the two schools and the flow and the function.
Wonderful, yes. Thank you for the question. As Dave had mentioned previous in the presentation, that Mariner Boardwalk, I love the name, really looking as a, to define that through materials, through colors, through the arrangement of key spaces at the top, at the north end, and to the south with that maker's space at the opposite end, pulling that even through the dining area. So we'll be affecting finishes and colors and materials in the dining area. We see that as a way of really organizing the flow and the circulation of the building and connecting, you know, all ends of the campus and be very impactful. I know Sheri is excited to explore the possibilities of that Mariner Boardwalk.
Thank you.
Yes.
Can you go back to the Innovation Center for a quick second?
Is there a particular slide you'd like to show?
The floor plan.
Yep.
Are the individual, the four blue ones, or do they open up to each other?
They are individual rooms, but each pair, so this pair and then this pair, share an overhead garage door that will allow the spaces to open onto each other and be used for, you know, again, large group instruction, expanded events. So there is that opportunity to have those pairs open onto each other. And we've even gotten into discussing, you know, the glass of those doors to be translucent, you know, so when you have them down.
Yeah, I was wondering if you were going to have them opaque, because didn't Northern have glass between two classrooms and they had too much trouble with kids for glasses?
Transparency is always a conversation that we're working closely with the district and the users on developing, and I think we even had some conversations about levels of transparency. When you see, you know, full glass in the schematic rendering, we haven't yet quite gotten through the design development or final stages. So we're studying those carefully with...
Yeah, because I thought a couple teachers had a little problem with kids bugging other students during class.
We've found that the benefits of passive supervision, of natural light flooding into spaces have really helped with student experience and benefits to kids, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. I like that in Marine City with the skylight. Absolutely.
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that we're early in Marine City, and the renderings that Kyle showed you are all gray tones, you know, and we're doing that to be able to get scope definition and to define, you know, what opportunities there are. Next, very soon, you're going to see color renditions of these things where Danielle will be able to walk you through the materiality of the space and take you through that boardwalk experience, so you can see how those spaces will tie together with one another. So that's coming.
Do you may have any more questions?
No, it's awesome. We're super excited. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, we're really excited, too. Thank you so much for all your hard work, and it was a wonderful presentation.
You're welcome.
Excited.
Thank you. Okay, well, I guess then if nobody has anything else, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and everybody have a great weekend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.